All right, we can get started. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance, in attendance, we have, is President Nick Mosby here?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. From the members of the committee, we have myself, Councilman Christopher Burnett, Councilman Zeke Cohen, Councilman Eric Costello, Councilman Antonio Glover, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other council members in attendance, we have Councilman John Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I think that's the only other council member I see on it, on the call in attendance. Members from the Office of the President. Is Nikki Thompson on? Yeah, I see Matt Stegman is on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think that's it. Is anyone else from the Office of the President in attendance? Move on to the Mayor's Office, folks representing the Mayor's Office. Do we have Nina on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina Thanos. Excellent. This afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Legislative Oversight number 21-001, Police Department Consent Decree Implementation Update for the purpose of holding a legislative oversight hearing to have the Baltimore Police Department provide the City Council with a briefing on the consent decree implementation progress. The, this bill was introduced on January 11th, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilmember Mark Conway. And I'll jump into an open statement. Thank you all for being here today. This committee's goal is to improve public safety in our city and to ensure transparency and accountability in our public agencies. Today's hearing focuses on the implementation of the Baltimore City Police Department's consent decree. As a result of the tragic death of Freddie Gray and the subsequent revelations in the Department of Justice report of decades of unconstitutional city policing, the Police Department entered into a consent decree in 2017. The DOJ highlighted troubling findings, including unconstitutional stops, searches, and arrests, discrimination against African Americans, use of excessive force, violation of residents' civil liberties, gender bias and sexual assaults, investigations, and limited organizational capacity to provide adequate supervision, training, and administrative policies. The existing consent decree aims both to fix those deficiencies as well as fundamentally change the culture of BPD for the better. As Baltimore's legislative branch, we have a duty to keep an eye on the department's progress. I am eager to learn what changes have been implemented, specifically where we are with the foundational structural requirements needed to stand up the consent decree, data tracking and monitoring systems, department-wide policies and training. If we get these pieces right on the front end, we can be, we can expect better outcomes with full implementation. Of the completed tasks, what does the data show? Are we making progress in addressing the deficits illustrated in the DOJ report? Is there a downward trend in overall crime, use of force, and racially motivated stopping? Done right, community policing and constitutional policing are also effective crime-fighting tools and strategies that will make our city safer. Now we'll hear from Commissioner Harrison and his team, and I thank them for coming before the committee to provide an update and answer our questions. We know that this work is challenging, and we seek to be partners in moving BPD into a new era of constitutional, community-oriented policing. We, as a city, must get this right. Onto agency reports, the committee will now hear a report from agency representatives. Please state your name, and I'll start off with the Baltimore Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council President, Chairman Conway, and the honorable members of the City Council. Certainly, you know my name is Michael Harrison, the Baltimore Police Commissioner, and I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this afternoon. I am joined by my entire executive team, all the way from all my deputy commissioners, my chief and deputy chiefs of staff, my chief of patrol, chief of detectives, my legal advisor, my deputy chiefs of patrol and investigations are all here with us today. And I would like to begin the day by giving you a very high-level overview of the consent decree before we jump into the actual presentation. Mr. Chairman, I know you like to get right to the meat of the hearing, so I'll be as brief as possible. 2017, the city entered into a consent decree with the United States Department of Justice, consisting of 511 paragraphs, spanning nearly 20 separate topic areas. It is by far the most expansive consent decree in the history of our country. When I became Commissioner in 2019, my first order of business was to put together the best possible team of individuals who will have the experience, capacity, work ethic, and temperament to implement these many reforms. For the leader of any organization, it is imperative that you surround yourself with the best and most talented people. So personnel is policy. So with that in mind, my very first hire was Danny Murphy, who serves as our Deputy Commissioner for Compliance. Now Danny led out compliance efforts in New Orleans with me, and together, we are the only individuals to have led two major departments in America under a consent decree, federal consent decree. And as Deputy Commissioner, he oversees many functions, including the Consent Decree Implementation Unit and the Reform Management Process, Policy Development, and Liaising with Monitors and the DOJ, the Education and Training Division, which plays a pivotal role in training all of our officers on reform practices, the Information Technology Division, which is required to overhaul our antiquated paper-based reporting systems to provide better reporting and monitoring capabilities, the Performance Standards Section, which conducts internal inspections and audits so that we can know if our officers are following our reform policies, and the department's first-ever Chief Equity Officer, who ensures all of our decisions, both internally and externally, are made through the lens of equity. This equity will obviously, obviously relates to all of our reform initiatives. In sum, the Compliance Bureau comprises the pillars of reform, from the written guidance to our officers in the form of policy, to engaging training that is required to translate our reform policies into improved actions on the streets, to modernizing our technology to effectively document and monitor our activities, to performance reviews we will be conducting to assess our performance according to our reform policies. The consent decree requires systematic coordination of these and other functions to ultimately deliver what the consent decree requires, which is better services to our community. I'd like to focus on a few of these functions, which are critical topics in our reforms today. First, the Information Technology Section, that is led by the department's first-ever Chief Technology Officer, Woody Davis. Technology is a major component of the consent decree, and that is why the CTO is elevated in status as a member of my executive team. I believe Mr. Davis has taken the BPD a long way in his 18 months on the job. As a department, we were historically primitive technologically, but we are now on a trajectory to move us from a primarily paper-based analog department to a totally modern digital organization. The pace of these IT modernizations is a notable achievement and is acknowledged as such by Judge Bredor and the monitors. Perhaps our biggest and most robust important project is our new records management system, which is currently in its implementation phase. This project will be foundational and transformational, as it will not only allow the monitors to measure our compliance with the consent decree, but also enhance our operational case management and intelligence sharing capacity. This is just one example, and we will touch upon some other projects during the presentation. But if you would like, we can schedule a separate briefing with Chief Davis on the department's entire technology roadmap. Another critical division driving our reforms is the Education and Training Section. Training requires span of our lengthy consent decree, because effective training has been lacking in our past, and it is vitally necessary to giving our officers the support they need to perform at a higher level. Now to that end, we've invested a great deal of time, energy, and resources in making lasting changes in how we train our officers to achieve better outcomes. We relocated our academy from a rundown, dilapidated formal middle school to a more fitting academic institution at the University of Baltimore, with the design, space, and technology to train the 200-plus recruits and 2,400-plus officers who receive in-service training every year. To lead the academy, I promoted Major Martin Bartner through a new competitive, open, and transparent process, and then hired a noted policing academic, Dr. Gary Carter, and BPD's perhaps first-ever academic director to elevate the quality of our training. To supplement their efforts, we have brought onboard curriculum writers and legal instructors to provide some of the leading law enforcement education in the country. And as a result of the academy's performance, we are receiving excellent feedback from our officers. Surveys given after our use-of-force training had a 97%, the officers rate the training as an improvement over previous training. Additionally, an FOP official, who usually is more critical than he is complimentary, tweeted that "we have," in quote, "put together the best in-service stop, insertion, arrest training I've had in 27 years." This is all very important. When I became Commissioner, the common concern I heard from our officers was they didn't understand what the consent decree was, and they didn't know what they were allowed to do. These trainings will make our officers more confident in carrying out their duties and understanding why these practices are critical in building trust and protecting our community. So that's compliance in a nutshell, but let me discuss another critical area in the reform effort, which is the Public Integrity Bureau. By compliance, I elevated this function to its own bureau, led by Deputy Commissioner. Compliance and discipline are now given the same status in our organization structure as operations and administration. To lead the Public Integrity Bureau, I chose a highly respected former FBI agent, Brian Nato, who, among other career highlights, was in charge of the FBI's unit that handles public corruption cases nationally. Deputy Commissioner Nato leads our efforts in overhauling our Internal Affairs Division to make it more efficient and effective. To support this undertaking, we've added investigators to his staff with plans to add more pursuant to the Consent Decree approved staffing plan. Since joining the BPD, DC Nato has developed an intake manual for PIB investigators to ensure that all complaints, be it from a citizen or fellow officer, are anonymously or properly received, logged, classified, monitored, and investigated. He's expanded the use of IA Pro, which is a digital database, to automate what has been mainly a paper-based system, created an early resolution process for minor misconduct to resolve those issues quickly and allow investigators to focus on more serious complaints. He's developed a new disciplinary matrix, which is still pending court approval, that standardizes and makes consistent the penalty guidelines for violations of policy. The question that will invariably be asked is, is the consent decree working, and what effect is it having on discipline? Some of you have seen the recently released ACLU report, Chasing Justice, that studied police misconduct cases from 2015 to 2019. Now, I believe that the methodology used in the report, which even the author describes as probabilistic matching, is flawed and has given the public a very skewed sense of the data. We can discuss this in further detail if you like. However, on a macro level, I don't think any of us argues with the conclusion of the report that reform and change is needed. That is why we're all here, that is why we're making these reforms. It is why I'm supporting changes to the state LEOBR, as well as Speaker Jones's MPIA bill. Now, despite a lot of work that still remains, the data suggests that there is progress being made. The time it takes to investigate a complaint has been cut by nearly 25%. However, we still have a very long way to go to reduce the investigatory period to the 90 days required by the consent decree. But even more important than the speed of the investigador process is the quality. To that end, we've developed training in draft form that will help our detectives improve the objectivity and thoroughness of these investigations. Additionally, we've seen the use-of-force incidents decrease by a total of 29%, as well as the number of misconduct complaints decreased by a total of 41% from 2019 to 2020. These numbers are very encouraging, but one caveat needs to be flagged, and that is we do not know to what degree COVID and the lower number of citizen interactions had on these declines. So we do need to delve into and study this variable even more. All of this is not to say that we don't have more obstacles or areas that could use more improvement. The most glaring is staffing. Without growing the department, we cannot achieve the goals of the staffing plan or our community policing plan, not to mention our basic operations to fight crime. It is an area that Judge Bredor grills us on every court hearing, which happens every month, though there are some bright spots on that front as well. Now, last year, we hired 224 recruits, which represents more people hired in a given year than at any other point in the last decade. That's quite a feat, considering the challenges of police recruiting nationally. But it is still, only represents anemic net growth in the department. As quickly as we can get these new hires in the door, veteran officers exit out of the door mainly through retirements, but some by voluntary separations and other by terminations. With the exceptions of those who cannot perform the duties of being a police officer and those who shouldn't, retention is an area we need to work on. Other questions that I'm sure is on your mind is, where are we in the process, and how close are we to compliance? Are we 50% away? Are we there, or 25%? These are totally fair questions that you and your constituents want to know. Unfortunately, it is difficult for me to answer, since, first of all, I am not the one determining whether we are in compliance or not in compliance. That's solely the job of the monitors. And secondly, most of these reforms are qualitative rather than quantitative. With all of that said, as we go through the presentation, we will give you a snapshot, not so much as where we are, but what we believe we've completed and what's still in the queue. I'll close by saying progress is never fast enough. Not for you, not for anyone you represent, not for the mayor, and not for me. But I firmly believe we've made great strides, leaps even, in relatively brief period of time. My team and I are committed to seeing these reforms through. It's why some of us uprooted our families halfway around the country, just for the opportunity to make positive change in this department and make this city a safer place. So thank you again for allowing me to speak. With that in hand, I'll hand it off to Deputy Commissioner Murphy, who will give you the presentation.
Thank you for that introduction, Commissioner. I hope everyone can see my screen. We've prepared a slide deck for today, and appreciate Chairman Conway, Council President Mosby, and all the members of the City Council, who are taking time out of their busy schedules to discuss this historic reform project, we're in the middle of transforming the Baltimore Police Department. And so the agenda for today was, we're going to provide a brief consent decree overview. Chairman Conway and Commissioner Harrison have already hit the high points there, but we want to make sure everyone's starting from an understanding of what the consent decree is and what it calls for, and what it requires the Baltimore Police Department to do at the end of the day. Then we'll talk, provide some updates on where we are in this massive reform process and highlighting findings from the Consent Decree Monitor's semi-annual, semi-annual report that they issued in September of last year. And then we'll emphasize that we're looking to engage as much as possible with our community in transforming this department into the one that the community and our officers need and deserve. So, and please, at any time, council members, break in with questions about the topics we're discussing here. We want to make sure that this is as responsive as possible to the interests of you and your constituents. So just to hit some of the high points of, what is the consent decree? How did it come to be, and what does it require? As I said, Chairman Conway and Commissioner Harrison already hit some of the high points here, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. After Freddie Gray, DOJ came in and did an investigation into the practices of the department, and they issued an extensive report outlining what they found to be a pattern or practice of unconstitutional in many areas of the department, which I'll enumerate in a second. As a result of that investigation finding a pattern or practice of unconstitutional policing, the city of Baltimore and the Department of Justice agreed to a reform mandate called a federal consent decree. It was signed in April 2017 to remedy the unconstitutional practices identified in the Department of Justice's investigation. And this required sweeping changes, not just to policy and training, but performance at the end of the day. The decree is all about the department performing in line with community expectations at the end of the day and protecting the rights of the community. So as we embark and move through this consent decree reform process, there is a heavy amount of oversight at the federal level. There is a federal judge, Judge James Bredor, oversees this implementation with the help of a consent decree monitoring team, which is comprised of experts from policing, the legal field, as well as academics in, in the law enforcement realm, who provide continual feedback, technical assistance, and ultimately assess how BPD is performing implementing these, these many reforms of the decree. And as I said, these reforms require extensive changes to not just policy and training, but performance monitoring, management, supervision, and accountability mechanisms. Because at the end of the day, the only way to succeed on this decree and ultimately conclude it is to perform successfully according to the decree. Policy and training are just the foundation. It's all about performance according to that policy and training at the end of the day to become a better police department, not just for BPD, but obviously for our whole community, to build trust and become more effective at promoting public safety in partnership with our community. So there's many areas of the decree which are responsive to the Department of Justice's investigation, which found that pattern or practice of unconstitutional policing, and which Chairman Conway hit on many of the topics here in his introductory remarks. So what you're seeing on the screen right now are the various focus areas and sections of the decree. And you'll see that this aligns with many of the national calls for police reform, which members across this nation took to the streets this summer and at other times to call for in their police departments. Reforms on use of force, making sure that when police are engaging with the community, they're doing it in the safest way possible to value the sanctity of everyone's lives and de-escalate. Stop, search, and arrest. Are we being constitutional in our enforcement practices? And beyond that, are we being impartial in our stop, search, and arrest practices? Which is, of course, an element of, of the Constitution and getting to bias-related enforcement tactics as Chairman Conway brought up at the very beginning. Community policing, obviously, is a big part of the reform discussion today about agencies really working hand-in-hand with their communities to build new relationships, repair broken relationships, because we, the Police Department, needs to work tirelessly to build trust with our communities so that we can collaborate for the benefit of productive relationships on fostering public health and public safety in our communities. And behavioral health is another big topic that we'll hit on in a second, about reimagining how a city can respond to behavioral health crisis situations, of which, of course, we know there are many in our city. So there are many different topics here. I won't hit on every one of them today, but we welcome the opportunity to come back and provide more detail about the progress of reforms at any time, as is helpful to this, to this body. We'll also focus on training, technology modernization, and misconduct today, amongst the various other topics on the screen in front of you. So in each one of these areas, there are many different requirements. And it's incumbent upon the BPD, not just that policy and training, but make sure that they come to life in our services to the community. And we follow a very structured, rigorous, systematic process to implementing these reforms. First, in each one of these areas, like use of force, stop, searches, and arrests, we have to come up with policies that accord with the consent decree, with law, and with best practices in policing. DOJ investigation found issues with the policies of the Baltimore Police Department. Through this consent decree process, we are remedying those issues in our policies and going from policies that had holes and problems in them to policies that other jurisdictions are now looking at as a model for implementing in their, in their, in their areas. And in, in our policy development process, whenever we are working on a core use of, a core consent decree policy like use of force, stop, search, and arrest, behavioral health, and the like, those policies go through two batches of public comment where we are working to gain feedback from the community about these policies to ensure that they are in line with community expectations. Throughout the policy development process, we have a tremendous amount of discussions and technical assistance from the monitoring team and the Department of Justice to ensure that our policies are top of the line and in line with serving our community to the, to the highest possible level. Once we have that policy in place, that written guidance on what our officers are supposed to do, of course, we need to provide them effective, engaging training to help those new reform policies come alive on the streets to better serve our, our community. And what the DOJ investigation found was that training was often either nonexistent, lacking, and/or not engaging, not helping our officers do what they need to do to fulfill their duties at the highest levels and build trust in every interaction. That'll be a theme throughout our conversation today, but the importance of training and the strides, the sea changes, the monitors call it, that BPD has taken on training, this pivotal fulcrum of turning the written guidance into performance. But once we get through policy and training, that is the foundation. At the end of the day, it is all about performing according to policy and training and make, in this implementation process. It's all about implementing, implementing these reform practices continuously and effectively. And that is where the monitoring team will conduct regular assessments of where we are in the process and provide public reports on how we're doing on use of force, for example, stop, search, and arrest, and the like. At the same time, BPD is developing internal monitoring mechanisms so that we can be the, become the self-correcting, self-improving agency contemplated by the consent decree and eventually get to a point where we are solving our own problems, taking care of any issues that are out there, and building trust in delivering the policing services that our community is looking for, and ultimately concluding this consent decree. So there are so many different paragraphs and so many different sections of the decree. We have been working on creating a graphic to summarize where we are in this very complicated process. Disclaimer with this graphic is that it necessarily is oversimplifying some of the stages in the process. There are 511 paragraphs, as the Commissioner mentioned, and some of these different areas have multiple different work streams at once. But the goal of this is to show, on the left-hand side, many of the different focus areas of the decree, broken out by different streams of work that are required. And then along the top, you can see that first bucket is how we're moving through that policy and planning development process. Then we get to the training development process and ultimately implementation of the reforms, where we have to perform according to the policy and training. So this is basically mapping out across the different sections of the decree where we are on this rigorous implementation process, from policy to training to implementation. So the green represents what has been accomplished to date, and blue represents what we are working on currently at this point. And there, the monitors included a version of this in their recent report that includes more data than this. For the sake of today's presentation, we tried to make it legible and bring it all together. And in some ways, this is underselling progress, to be honest. But for instance, stop, searches, and arrests is one line on here. That is many paragraphs of the consent decree, but it's just representing one row right now. In time, that may be broken out into multiple rows as we take a very close look at, how are we doing on stops? Are we doing on searches? How are we doing on arrests? Similarly, use of force is one line here, that we're in that implementation phase. You can see the blue in the implementation column there. That is many different paragraphs of the decree, a core area of the decree. We're in the implementation phase there as well. But you can see some of the white on the screen is where we've got work to do. And as we'll touch on later, the misconduct section is one of the biggest parts of the consent decree. It's one of the challenges that the monitors highlighted in their recent report. You can see we're in this policy drafting phase there. Then we'll move into training and implementation. And at the end of the day, anything that gets that implementation phase, we have to prove we are complying with those many requirements. So this is a graphic we plan to enhance and provide more explanation on, in our communication materials to the public and plan to keep updated on our website in the future. And appreciate any feedback that the group has to offer on how this can be helpful to the community on explaining where we are in this very complicated process. So moving forward, as I mentioned earlier, the monitors produce regular reports on how BPD is performing and progressing in the decree. The, the recent report from September of last year was the first comprehensive reassessment, really taking a big-picture view of where we are in this process. What are the successes and what are the challenges, achievements and challenges? And also, And also getting our first big step into compliance assessments. What is the quality of the implementation in some of these sections of the decree? And I'll highlight some of their findings in the remainder of this presentation. So one of their big findings on the advancements in the decree implementation to date is our leadership commitment to reform, but also the capacity to reform. A frequent topic that comes up in the public hearings in front of Judge Bredar, which happened on a quarterly basis, and we invite council members, their staff, and their constituents to participate in those meetings to hear from the judge, from the Department of Justice, from the monitoring team, how we are progressing. One thing they frequently focused on is that Baltimore has had a commitment to reform. And there is a desire to make these reforms happen. But the systemic nature of the issues and the expanse of the work that is required to overcome those issues is massive. And there have been questions about the capacity to meet that challenge. And in their recent report, they spoke about how we were, the new leadership team under Commissioner Harrison is devoted to action and not just commitment. And they're seeing progress accelerate as a result of Commissioner Harrison's commitment and the capacity of this executive team. And we appreciate their confidence on that front, though they certainly emphasize there is much work to do. Training was one of the other big focus areas that they found significant advancement. And what they found is it's not just the quantity of training that is advanced, but the quality of the training. Frequently, training in the past might be lacking or death by PowerPoint and not really help officers engage with the topic and know how to go out on the street and really perform. We'll talk more about stop, search, and arrest training in a little bit. But this is a key finding of our consent decree monitors that is integral to making these reforms work at the end of the day. It's not just telling our officers what they have to do and what they cannot do, but trying to explain why this is the best way to do this, how this makes us a more effective police department, how this builds trust with our community, and ultimately will facilitate better bonds with our community, which are necessary to effectively fighting crime. And as the Commissioner said, we found that 97% of officers agreed or strongly agreed that the use-of-force training was better than previous training on that topic. And we've had similar results. They're very positive about stop, search, and arrest and other training, saying that the training is engaging and it's enhancing understanding of the direction that the department is going in. And we think the decree and this training is helping out in manifest and tangible ways. The monitors pointed out the advancements that the BPD has made on protecting First Amendment rights. What the city and the world saw in terms of BPD's response to the numerous huge protests this summer were a huge distance from what was seen after Freddie Gray. And that is one sign of progress that we think the BPD has been making. And it's a testament to partnerships with the community and the community policing itself as well. But we want to recognize, the monitors have recognized, the advancements BPD has made on that front. And we've had other agencies reaching out to us, asking for guidance on how to effectively support and protect the First Amendment rights of everyone in our community while also fostering public safety. And we think that more measured, de-escalated response to the protests is due in some part to our use-of-force reforms. Our key policies on use of force went into effect in 2019 after comprehensive training for the entire department. And once again, this is an example of a policy in a core area that the community rightfully cares so much about, protecting them when there's an officer encounter with the community. This policy was lacking before the consent decree era came about. But now, other agencies have been asking us about this policy as a potential model for them moving forward on reforms. And one of the reasons why is that our policy incorporates core principles that our community is demanding and needs. And these are many of the things you've heard about in protests across the nation after the tragedies with George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and others. And these core principles in our use-of-force policy are really what's essential about effective policing today. Valuing the sanctity of human life, valuing peaceful resolutions and de-escalation, avoiding escalation, continually assessing a situation to make sure we're doing the best thing for everyone involved in that situation to be safe and healthy at the end of the encounter. Making sure we're reporting use of force and a duty to intervene, which we'll speak about in greater detail in a second. A duty to intervene when there's an excessive force situation for the betterment of everyone involved, valuing the life of everyone involved and the tragic impacts that can happen if someone doesn't step in in these situations. And obviously, the duty to provide medical assistance, accountability, no retaliatory force. And critically, our standard for acceptable use of force is one of reasonable, necessary, and proportional. Necessary and proportional are two additions that most departments do not have. Their threshold is just reasonable. But through this process, we have elevated the standard for what acceptable use of force is to include necessary and proportional. And that is very much in line with what our community is expecting our police department to do. So those are the core principles of our new use-of-force policy, which we trained on. And now it's about performing according to those policies and holding our own accountable when they aren't in line with the policies. So these are some stats on use-of-force incidents overall from 2018 to 2020. And I put an asterisk on 2020, as Commissioner Harrison said. COVID, obviously, turned the world on its head in 2020. And so while we're seeing decreases in use of force for 2020, we want to be very upfront and careful to make sure, as we work with the monitors and the DOJ on doing a use-of-force annual report, we will do our best to factor in how did COVID play into these decreases in use of force. That said, obviously, we are pleased that use-of-force incidents are going down from 2018 to 2019 to 2020. You may ask why there isn't reporting prior to that. A part of that is because new policies and new training were not in effect and there were not consistent reporting standards. For instance, I don't think the pointing of a firearm, for instance, would have been included in policies dating back sometime before 2018. But you can see that there was a 16% decrease from 2018 to 19, and then a 27% decrease from 2019 to 2020, which totals to a 39% decrease from 2018 to 2020. So that those force trends are going in the direction of what our community would want and deserve and in line with the general direction of the consent decree. Though the consent decree requires additional reporting, we need to make sure we're reporting everything, but we are pleased to see general decreases there. To break that into greater granularity, we classify each one of our uses of force on three levels, with level one being the lowest, level three being the highest. On the right-hand side, you can see the level-three stats from 2018 to 2020. A level-three use of force is the highest level. It includes a firearm discharge, an officer-involved shooting. And you can see that has decreased from 22 to 20 to 18 over the last three years, which is a slight decrease but fairly consistent. On the left-hand side, when we look at level ones and level twos, level one would be some kind of hands-on compliance technique that might generate some type of short-lived transient pain, perhaps someone in an arrest situation. Level two is the medium level, where an officer may tase an individual four or five seconds in a certain situation. So you can see that the level ones have gone down over time from 18 to 19 to 2020, from 1162 down to 689. Level twos increased slightly from 2018 to 2019, and then with a fairly significant drop from 2019 to 2020. So these are showing overall decreases from 2018 to 2020. And these will certainly be stats that we will be taking a very close look at. And this is the quantitative element of this, obviously. But in conjunction with the monitors, we'll be doing a lot of qualitative assessments about our use-of-force responses in these situations. So these are some of the stats we have right now. And we'll be working with the monitors at DOJ to do a collaborative analysis in an annual report, doing any further data cleaning that might be required and conducting that kind of assessment holistically within the realm of considering how COVID has impacted these stats. Moving on to another core area of reform, stops, searches, and arrests, constitutional crime fighting. So we've revised all of our policies, the core policies on this to date. We are finalizing, we're developing training on lesser offenses policies that we'll be providing middle of this year. But we've already hit on that topic generally in training. So this is about how to do constitutional stop, searches, and arrests in a way that builds trust and doesn't break trust. And so throughout our stop, search, and arrest practices, we emphasize procedural justice and fair and impartial policing. We don't see fair and impartial policing as a siloed topic of police reform. We see it as a topic that is involved in basically every element of police reform. So when we trained on use of force, impartial policing was an element of that training. When we trained on stop, search, and arrest, impartial policing was an element of that training. We're going to do follow-on, focused training on impartial policing that'll reemphasize those parts about use of force and stop, search, and arrest that we previously trained. It'll also be an element of our community policing training that's coming. So fairness, impartiality, and procedural justice are big elements of our moves forward in our training to build justice and legitimacy and build trust. One of the unique elements of our stop, search, and arrest practices is this most effective and least intrusive concept. And this really gets at not over-enforcing minor offenses in the ways that BPD and many other agencies have in the past. It's going directly against the 100,000 arrest era, which damaged trust in the community tremendously and very much contributed to the moment we're in today in this consent decree. And what this most effective, least intrusive response preaches to our officers and will continually reinforce is that we want to solve problems in the way that works best for communities but doesn't overly incarcerate or overly enforce on members of our community and have an unnecessarily detrimental impact on them. So for instance, if a verbal warning could resolve an issue where you've got a choice between a verbal warning and an arrest, if the verbal warning will solve the problem, go for the verbal warning. And we're going to continually monitor the use of those practices. And we think it's a critical step forward for enforcing the laws but in a way that builds trust and doesn't break it. And I'd like to pause here. I know you've heard a lot from me, but we've gotten a lot of positive comments from the field on this stop, search, and arrest training, which is critical. Because sometimes people can think this is handcuffing the cops. But this is about ensuring the cops have a very good understanding of what the rules are, what the Constitution is, what the policy is. And I'll pause here for Colonel Rich Worley, who oversees our patrol division, to give his feedback on what this training was like, what he's hearing, and how it can help with the crime fight in Baltimore.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, it was, one of the good things about the training is, first of all, everybody goes through it, which includes all the way up to the Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner. We all get this training. And when I was in there, it was probably the best training I've had in the 23 years that I've been here. It was interactive. You weren't just sitting there and just bored like a lot of the in-service training had been in the past. We had an incredible instructor in Tim Dixon, who was a lieutenant in our department, is now a lawyer, who challenged you. He even had, like, I've been doing this for a long time, and there's people in that class that have been doing it even longer, where you would give him an answer, and he's like, "Are you sure?" So he made you think, and he got you thinking, "Okay, yes, I am sure." So it was, he was pointed out, and I remember a training we had a couple of years ago where we were all together and we still had an issue with defining whether we could stop somebody or not stop somebody. It became a little bit of an issue. And I think this training cleared it up for everyone. And also, if we had questions, we could call him. But it was an interactive training. There was no way you were sitting there not talking. He made everybody talk, regardless of rank. And it was actually a fun environment to be in because you actually learned. You were learning as we were going. And again, it was one of the best trainings I've had and probably the best training I've had in 23 years.
Thank you for that, Colonel. And one of the other comments that I heard was, "If we had this training a decade ago, we wouldn't be in a consent decree." In that the previous stop, search, and arrest training was years ago. It was a guy reading out of a book and nothing engaging, helping those officers go out in the street and be proactive but protecting trust at the same time. And that's the type of quality training that we are trying to bring across the board to ensure our officers have the guidance and support they need to do the jobs at the level that they want to and that our community is expecting us to. And so one of the trainings we are now implementing is called EPIC. You may have heard about this. It's called, it stands for ethical policing is courageous. And this training is about active bystandership and pure intervention and stepping in when potential misconduct or mistake is going to happen. And stepping in in those situations is for the benefit of everyone involved, the community, the officer who is making a mistake, and the officer who is witnessing it. Pure intervention is something that is proven in other fields, in other professional fields like aviation and medicine, but it has only recently come to the world of policing. While Commissioner Harrison and I were in New Orleans, we created this program as part of the consent decree. It really took it much further than the consent decree required. To create a peer intervention program, we brought in social science experts. Dr. Irvin Staub, who had lived through the Holocaust, and he helped us develop this training in New Orleans called EPIC that is now getting national attention. And the Georgetown Law Center is now helping it go national through, basically, it's an evolution of EPIC called ABLE, Active Bystandership in Law Enforcement. NYPD just announced the other day that they'll be implementing this. Many other agencies are implementing this. And it represents one of many necessary steps forward in policing. It gets directly to the George Floyd tragedy, where you see an officer doing something profoundly tragic and criminal and other officers standing around not intervening. If someone could have stepped in in that situation immediately, the world would be a different place, George Floyd would be alive. And the failure to intervene is not something new in policing. Go back 30 years to Rodney King. Finally, we are implementing training programs to help address the barriers, the real psychological barriers to stepping in in these situations and practice intervening. Minneapolis had a policy that had set a duty to intervene, but they did not train on it. And this kind of training is really important to reiterating the expectation to duty to intervene, the benefits of intervening, the costs of not intervening to the officers themselves, to the department, and to the community. And so we are very excited about rolling out this training because it's essential to being a progressive, modern police department. And we are training all of our officers on it right now. Eight hours of training for every member. And we're going to be reinforcing this through training moving forward, including in use-of-force training, stop, search, and arrest, impartial policing training, and the like. And this training has been led by informal leaders across the department. So they can stand up and say, "This is what BPD has to be about." We have all seen the consequences in BPD's past of officers failing to step in and how that's hurt everyone, how that's hurt the department, and how that's hurt our community and contributed to the difficult situation we're all in. EPIC is one of many steps forward to address the situation we are in. And I'd like to play a video, a brief video from informal leaders across the department who are helping roll out this EPIC program.
Deputy Commissioner, we cannot hear the video.
Let me see. Thank you for letting me know about that. Let's see, stop video. Having some issues with that. I apologize. We'll send around that video to everyone for afterwards. And maybe if we can troubleshoot it while we're in here, get it going. And maybe if we can troubleshoot it while we're in here, get it going. But essentially what you're hearing in that video is officers spanning roles in the department talking about how this is a necessary step forward for us. And we can't afford to be in a position where, where we are failing to intervene in misconduct and that it's really for the betterment of everyone in these situations and essential to public trust to, to step in in these situations. So it's an essential foundation to that culture change that you were talking about at the beginning, Chairman Conway. And it really has to, it's an essential element of culture change in the department. I apologize for the technical difficulty on that front, but we'll be sure to send that video around. It's available on our Epic website, epic.baltimore.org. And we'll be sure to send that around later. So moving on to a few other topics before we wrap up our presentation, open any questions at any time. Responding to individuals in crisis and behavioral health is obviously a huge, a huge topic in the police reform conversation, in the reimagining conversation. And the consent decree requires that we overhaul our policies and training on the officer response, implementing that crisis intervention team model, which is essential to effectively responding to these incidents. But not just that, there's a real city element to this of how can the city create a better ecosystem and support structure for individuals who have behavioral health and substance abuse issues? So as part of these reforms, the city conducted a gaps analysis to identify what gaps are there in the system and propose some recommended solutions to filling those gaps with the goal of reducing police involvement in low danger, low risk behavioral health situations. And we're moving forward with the implementation of that gaps analysis in a collaborative manner with a group called the Collaborative Planning and Implementation Committee, which involves not just BPD and city members, but members of the behavioral health community in Baltimore. So that's a big piece of work and something the monitors have praised us for on moving forward with this massive systems change. Community policing, a huge topic in the police reform conversation and something that was pointed out by the Department of Justice, that the department didn't have a community policing plan. It also did not have comprehensive training on how to implement community policing in a, on a regular, everyday basis. And what we've heard from officers is that they have not heard, had the consistent, clear direction on how to implement community policing. And you hear people talk about this phrase, phrase a lot. And too often it can kind of be a buzzword that doesn't translate into action. And that's what this plan is about and that's what this training is about. So BPD has finalized its first ever community policing plan. We will implement, we will revisit this on an annual basis and provide continual training on it right now. And one of the engagement opportunities we want to make sure people are aware of and look forward to any and all engagement on this is that we're going to be having two virtual workshops regarding the first draft of our training plan to make community policing come alive. The development process for these draft materials has been very community driven and collaborative thus far, but we want to get an even broader base of community input on these, on this critical training. So if anyone would like to visit that, that URL right there, that web link for more information, please do. And I will now turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Nato to talk about misconduct reforms.
Thank you, DC Murphy, and good afternoon, Chairman and Members of the Council. As the Police Commissioner mentioned, my name is Brian Nato. I'm the Deputy Police Commissioner for Public Integrity. And I've been here for about 15 months. And really the reason I came here was because of Commissioner Harrison. As a leader in the FBI overseeing public corruption, I was really aware of the process, processes going on in various departments around the country. And I'd seen a lot of good work done in New Orleans. And so when the Commissioner was brought here to Baltimore, I was stationed here in Baltimore at the time and I was excited about that. So it was certainly a great opportunity for me to come here to help him with the reform process. When I came to Public Integrity Bureau, there were issues that needed to be corrected. And we've done a lot of those corrections in the time I've been here. The Commissioner mentioned some of them. I will just go over a few of them again. One, we've added detectives. Detectives are necessary to actually do the cases so that when the public or the department makes complaints, that that process can get done in a quicker manner, but be done effectively. We've increased our staffing here to move that process along. And with the support of the Commissioner and the other deputies, we'll add more staff along the way to make sure that that continues in that direction. Technology, we integrated technology into public, at the Public Integrity Bureau. In the past, everything was done on paper. We have made that into an entire technology process where everything is done electronically, which has made it much easier to track cases and certainly move those cases through the process far more easily. Transparency, very important that we're transparent, transparent with the public as to what we were doing. We've instituted some processes where we communicate with the public when they file complaints. They receive notification every 30 days that the complaint is ongoing. And when there's a finale to the case, they receive notification that the case has been completed. Also, we take complaints from them either by email, by phone or in person. And we want to make sure that we are open to the public. So if they want to file a complaint, that they feel the ability to do that. One way we do that is not be housed at an actual police facility. We have an offsite location. So we make that very, very much aware to the public. We started doing coronal reports. Coronal reports are reports going out about cases, types of cases, various data points. Those are starting to go out. We have done the one, one for late 2019. We're working on the 2021s. Those are posted out on the BPD websites that we have easy access to those for the public to see the types of cases we're doing. Also, we're doing policy revisions. The policies were outdated as part of the comprehensive policy revision process. We are moving forward with changing some of the processes that we use. One of them is the matrix, which we use to actually levy a penalty against a police officer or a member of the department for misconduct. We're making that, make sure that that's updated more fairly used so that everybody across the board gets the same penalty and they all follow the same process. Training for our detectives, one thing we lack was training. So we have contracted with a subject matter expert who's a former New Jersey State Police Officer. He's been approved by the court and by the DOJ, who's putting together a training process for us. All detectives who work in the Public Integrity Bureau will go through the training. It's a 40 hour training that we hope to launch early this year. Currently, we're working on the modules with the subject matter experts and also DOJ and the monitoring team. Adding civilians to the trial boards. You probably have seen this in the written and various news publications. We are the first department in the state that's civilians to our trial boards. Now, our trial boards are very similar to a court process where if you're a member of the department and you were charged with committing a offense, if you don't agree to the charge and to the penalty, you have the right under LEOVR to have a trial board. In the past, trial boards consisted of three members of the department. Now they consist of three members of the department and two members of the public. We were very excited that we had over 100 people actually apply for those positions. We selected approximately 60, put them through training during COVID, Zoom training that was run by our educational and training division with the support of the MPTC, which is Maryland Police Standards Training. And from that, they completed the course, did a ride along program. And we have about 40 people that have completed that, that now sit on our trial boards. Those are random draws for a trial board. So we have a system that randomly draws civilians as well as members for the trial boards. We started running those late last year and so far they've been very successful. So we're excited about that, being the first in the state to do that. Really what we're looking for are results, right? We want the results here to be a fair process and a quicker process. So how have we done that? We've instituted an early resolution process. What that allows is complaints that come here that are minor in nature. Those consist of lost property, fair to appear in court, or fair to appear for medical. Those cases where they come here, rather than tie up my investigators to do the case, we can send those right to the district. District can utilize the process, speak to the officer immediately, find out what the pro, what the problem was, resolve it. And if they admit to it, then they, it comes back here for a quick adjudication. Really that has moved the process up. So far we've done probably about a hundred and, hundred and so of those cases. It's really increased the process and it really gets commanders in the field to have conversations with the members who work in their districts, rather than it come here and have us go through the process. It gives commanders opportunities to have sit downs and discuss their actions with their own members. We've just added to that also fair to appear for training. So if one of our members doesn't take training, we could do that. We'll build in a dashboard. A dashboard is going to be used to take all of the data information we have here so we can analyze it and we can look for trends. Are there trends in different districts, different units? Are there trends by supervisors? Are there trends by commanders? What are the trends that we're seeing so that we can get on top of those trends? In the past, we've had a ton of information that we house here in our internal affairs section that we don't use across the department to fix problems and really educate and train people. So we're working on that as well. Also, we speak to, so my staff speaks to all the supervisors going through training, all the new recruits coming through about public integrity and really the mission that we do. We sit weekly with DOJ and the monitoring team to go over the process. And we sit monthly with the judge to go over the process we're making and we hope that is working to the best of our ability. So what I have on the next slide is just sort of a sampling of some complaint misconduct stats, just to go over. And overall complaints are down significantly in the department and we're working to analyze the COVID effect and whether effects may have taken place to show that. So if you look at the top under investigative section on the left, you'll see total complaints in 2021, 974, total complaints in 2019 were 64. So it's a 41% decrease. Most notably, I have to say though, is the excessive force complaints, which are down. Force complaints are down 54% overall indeed. And harassment complaints are down 70%. Again, we're working on analysis to find out what the COVID effect is and what other effects may take place that happen. You can see on the bottom, on the left halfway down, expedited resolution. That talks about cases that have been flagged for resolution that have been sent out through the process. That is a going process, which is really assisting us in getting through some cases that are sort of minor. Give the opportunity for commanders to have discussions with their folks early on. And then the bottom left side, those CRB eligible cases, allegations that we sent to CRB, the percentages of both for 2019 and 2020. On the right side, midway down, you'll see the terminations or resignations of Louis terminations. In 2020, we terminated or took a resignation Louis termination, 19 people. I think that showing the determination that we have holding officers accountable and making sure, you know, the right people are working for this department as we move through or as we move forward in, in the department. So if you have questions, you can take them or if we want to finish the slides, we can. It's back.
We're going to open the floor to questions at the end.
Thank you. All right. So technology, I believe is next.
Okay, moving on, we'll talk about technology and I'd like to introduce Chief Woody Davis, our Chief Technology Officer, to briefly discuss our sweeping technology modernization efforts and how they relate to the reports.
Thank you, Deputy. Technology transformation and modernization has moved to the forefront of priority and activity towards achieving compliance with the consent decree. As Police Commissioner Harrison stated, we are investing significant resources and energy into modernizing BPD's technologies, which in some cases, cases are over 20 years old. To that end, we are currently developing a new records management system to assist moving BPD from a paper-based reporting system to a modern, easy to use new records management system. We have invested in and is currently deploying our new learning management system to allow for tracking, management and deployment of state-of-the-art training material and experience. Our new workforce management system, this is also being deployed even as we speak. This will provide digital management of officer schedules, sick leave, usage and overtime. In the future, this very complex scheduling process will be integrated with Baltimore's new workday application. We have invested in upgrading, as Deputy Nato, Nato just recently mentioned, we have invested in upgrading our IA Pro application. It now provides more effective digital management of use of force and misconduct investigations. And finally, all of these new applications and future technologies will help feed into development of a future early intervention system designed to aggregate information to identify at-risk officer behaviors and manage corresponding intervention measures. BPD Information Technology Division modernization efforts serves as a foundation for many of our efforts to achieve compliance with the consent decree. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to you, sir, DC Murphy.
Thank you, Chief Davis. And the Baltimore decree, as far as I know, is unique in that it has a specific section on technology. With many other decrees require certain reporting requirements, but BPD was in a very deep technology hole that contributed to the issues identified in the Department of Justice investigation and ultimately the consent decree, where there were not modern electronic tracking systems for officers to report their activities for the department to effectively monitor and manage those activities at the levels needed to ultimately succeed on this consent decree. So these reforms on technology that Chief Davis is talking about impact so many other areas of reform. For instance, is reporting on stops and searches is something the monitoring team repeatedly have pointed out, the lack of quality data on those critical activities. This new records management system is going to address that issue. And all of these different systems feed into an early intervention system that we will build on top of these, these foundational systems Chief Davis just outlined. You've probably heard about early intervention systems as part of the national reform conversation. It'll be an important step forward and we look forward to bringing BPD from the past to the future on technology and to management. And all of this will add up to the technology is critical for us to eventually assess compliance and the outcomes of our reforms. At the end of the day, for BPD to successfully conclude the consent decree, we have to comply with all of the material requirements of the consent decree, all 511 paragraphs, but also specifically demonstrate improved outcomes in our performance across these core areas of the decree. The community surveys and perceptions of how the department is performing, improved metrics on stop, search and arrest, youth misconduct in other areas. So this technology modernization is foundational to implementing reforms and ultimately monitoring and improving outcomes for the community. And the monitoring team through its reporting will increasingly report to the community on how BPD is performing now that we're turning the corner from just focusing on policy to increasingly on training. We're now getting more into the implementation phase. And with this technology, they'll be able to do greater reporting on the quality of the implementation of our reforms. And so now entering this fourth year of reform, every year of reform, we have a very structured, systematic approach to implementing reforms, which is publicly available. It is extensive and it is rigorous with policy and training developments are always opportunities for public input during those core decree projects. The fourth year monitoring plan is currently up on BPD's website for comment. Anyone in the public can provide feedback on what the, on the plan for moving these reforms forward this year. And we have detailed implementation plans in each one of those sections of the decree. So we welcome any feedback on that regarding how we're going to move forward in accelerating this reform process and ensure increasingly we're delivering. in accelerating this reform process and ensure increasingly we're delivering heightened, improved policing services to the community. Throughout this process, we really want to engage with our community as much as possible to ensure that we are becoming the police department that they are looking for us to become, and that these reforms result in a true community policing department that is collaborative with the community and becomes more effective and better at protecting the community at the end of the day. So here's some information here on our reform calendar, various consent decree-specific social media channels, and we look forward to engaging with the community in any possible way to build this department into the one our community and our officers deserve. And that concludes our presentation. Chairman, now we look forward to discussing further and answering any questions.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner Murphy, and thank you, Commissioner Harrison, for pulling us together to, you know, walk us all through the ins and outs of the consent decree. I want to acknowledge Councilman Robert Stokes, who has joined the meeting. And we're going to jump into questions, and just for a bit of a clarification, we are going to open a floor to first folks in the committee to ask two questions, and then we'll circle back around for a single question before we open it up to other council members and in the public. So I'll just start with a question. We just finished our sixth year with over 300 homicides in Baltimore, even as other crime categories decline. What does the department see bringing down crime, excuse me, does the department see bringing down crime and implementing the consent decree as separate objectives or as complementary?
Commissioner Harrison, do you want to answer that? I'm happy to.
Yeah, I'm going to go first. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That, those are not mutually exclusive, and we've said that from the very beginning. They go hand in hand. And I do want to point out that many times we talk about crime, and we use the term crime when it's really, we talk about murder specifically. And a lot of times, you know, many people use those terms interchangeably. And while we did have decreases in all the crime category, it was very modest in the murder category. We need to really, really reduce that. It does require more of a comprehensive solution because that category is a crime of premeditation and a crime of passion, and many times it's happening more often than not between people who know one another. Now, they're not mutually exclusive, mutually exclusive. The consent decree is about process improvement and building trust within a community because they trust that, number one, the police department can do something about it, and the police department actually cares about it. And it's about building those relationships where we create a flow of information from the community to the police and from the police to the community where we can know about those crimes, the names of those perpetrators when we, right now, more often than not, don't know them. So it's really both of those going hand in hand. I do not separate consent decree and process improvement from the ability to improve our crime fight. They actually go hand in hand. As we build better policies that evolve into training, that evolve into good practice in the field, residents and citizens will begin to see a very different police department, and it enhances our ability to receive information when we otherwise would not. And so it really is about community relationship building. And I say this to every group of recruits that started, and I say it again at every graduation, and, you know, once we get back past COVID, you're able to attend the graduations, you'll hear me say this. I charge my officers with building relationships that were never built, improving on good ones, and repairing broken ones. If everything we do is about building a relationship that wasn't built and repairing a relationship that was broken, then we can get to a point where we can learn about things that people otherwise keep secret from us. That's what community policing is about. That's why we're moving into a community policing model. What we have right now is a few selected people in districts and a few selected people around the department who have historically been charged with community policing while the other 99% are charged with a crime fight. And we're now telling and teaching that all of us are community policing officers. It is the responsibility of everybody to be in a problem-solving, community policing-oriented, eccentric department. And that does not mean it's absent from the crime fight or separate from it. It is the model that we're moving to. So they're not mutually exclusive. They go hand in hand.
Thanks for clarifying that. And my second question, so of course, myself, I'm a data guy, and I'm not a data guy just because I like numbers, but because I realize what gets tracked gets done. So how are we measuring our progress implementing the consent decree and whether the reforms are leading to the results and outcomes that we want to see? Will there be a way for ourselves and, you know, also the public to quantitatively see progress? And to give you a little bit more of a focus on what I'm thinking, Slide six, there was a dashboard. Is this something that we can make accessible and make easily digestible for folks to understand our progress?
Yes, sir. That's absolutely the goal of that graphic, is trying to distill down this incredibly complicated process into some type of summary graphic that people can engage with and understand, and that we can update regularly and show the green moving across the screen. And behind that graphic, first off, that graphic could be bigger in terms of the number of categories. It's a struggle to kind of fit it on one screen, but we've got an explainer document of which paragraphs the different rows refer to, and we can provide additional context on that. So it's certainly something that we want to do imminently, sir. And that was a BPD creation to try to help facilitate community and BPD understanding of where we are in this process. So our goal is to use that as a continual progress meter effectively that we can share with you, put it up on our website and have it broadly available. And to your point, Chairman, I mean, one of the things that was so effective about implementing the reforms in New Orleans that really accelerated was being data-driven. And so the lack of technology that has hampered the reforms in some way is something that is front of mind for all of us. And the more we can create meaningful metrics from these new technologies that are not just internally available, but publicly available so that people can digest what are the outcomes of these reforms, the better. And one of the questions that comes up with consent decrees is the sustainability of them. You push so hard to get to the top of the mountain, and we need to stay there at the end of the day. And one of the ways to do that is to have a meaningful performance data publicly available so community leaders such as yourself can continue to hold the department accountable long-term. So I'm 100% with you, and we'll work on that graphic, making it as digestible and usable as possible, and welcome any feedback on that.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions for folks on the committee? I saw Councilwoman Ramos raise her hand first, so I'll start with you, Councilwoman Ramos.
I think Councilwoman Glover had his hands up first, but either way.
Hey, woman first.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner and staff, for coming before us and doing a really great job of explaining and breaking it down in categories. Really appreciate that, and of course, always happy to have the Commissioner as one of my constituents. Very proud that he's part of the 14. I love that chart that we just referenced, and I'm glad that you put it together. I noticed that where you were talking, where the section is around the disciplinary procedures, not as well completed. And I guess I'm wondering if that's mostly because you're hampered right now with LEOVR? And can you tell us a little bit more about, and I know one of the presenters definitely talked a little bit about that, but that's the section that I saw that wasn't as developed. And so if you could tell us a little bit about, if you're, you know, obviously you're waiting for what happens in the General Assembly, or if that's even related, and how you see that being accomplished sort of to catch up with what else is happening?
Thanks for that question. That's exactly what the graph is showing, and that's the purpose of being able to try to convey these big changes in a digestible way. And I'll turn it over to D.C. Nato, who oversees the Public Integrity Bureau and manages that misconduct section. One of the things there is the misconduct section is the most extensive section of the decree, and the monitors pointed it out as one of the areas of greatest challenge in their reassessment report. And I think part of that was due to not having steady, consistent leadership owning and pushing the reforms in that area. So I'll turn it over to D.C. Nato with that context.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that question. So you point out a very good point that the graph is very helpful to all of us, including members of the department that look at that to see where we are. As D.C. Murphy said, one of the most challenging parts of the consent decree is is really the section that I, the bureau that I now have charge of. And to be honest, when I got here, you know, there wasn't a lot of, the consent decree is now in its fourth year, and, you know, years one and two doesn't appear that there was a lot done in this area. Now, to be fair, you know, the department, as we talked about recruiting, has done a better job recruiting 2020, but the department certainly is down in manpower. And so when you have to pull manpower to put on the street, you have to pull from somewhere. So I think in the past, a lot of that TIB was not given really the priority that it really needed, and so it got behind. Now, when I came here, we had only 18 detectives doing cases. We had a process that was lagging, and we had 1,900 open cases. That is problematic from the start, and so it has taken, it took about a year to get that corrected. And the commissioner certainly supported putting additional resources here, plus the staffing study showed that we needed additional resources. So we have done that. I mean, we were all working on the process, but you can't just throw resources at a problem and think it's going to be fixed. There has to be a process in place, and so the process that I put in place is bringing new detectives here, you know, on a monthly to six-month, six-week turnaround time to sort of acclimate them to the process so we can train them up. We don't have the process in place, the training that we need yet, that is being developed right now, but we have our own internal training being put together. And so I think with the support of the commissioner, which he's given full support, as you probably know, he spent, you know, like 10 years doing internal affairs when he was in New Orleans, so it's certainly at the heart. And we know that here, if we can actually, if we can actually correct the process here and train and educate our officers, that that will lead to a positive move in the future. And, you know, as the monitoring team has mentioned, it is problematic, but they are very supportive of the work that we've been doing and processes that we're moving forward. And again, we meet with them weekly to go over the process, and so that's where we're moving to.
Mr. Chair, may I follow up? The, so, but it seems that there's, isn't there a critical point in what you're trying to do? And that is the disciplinary procedures, which right now are very much dictated with LEOVR. But the commissioner has been very clear that there are sections of LEOVR that need to be repealed in order to continue to go with the consent decree. Is that right? Is that under review, sir, or is it under formal?
So you are correct. I mean, the process certainly is structured during the LEOVR. You know, we will work with whatever process, the, let's say.
You're breaking up a little, sir.
Work with. We have to. There are portions that will be able to tell you. Don't work in our favor.
He's breaking, all right. You're breaking up, sir.
D.C., you're breaking up. I'm not sure if the PC or someone else could try to respond to that.
Does anyone want to pick up for that?
Well, I think you brought up a very good point, and he was breaking up. I didn't, I didn't hear any of his answer. I just heard him breaking up, but I think your question is, to get to where we're supposed to be does LEOVR create barriers or inhibits us from creating the kind of discipline that meets with the consent decree? Well, I think the answer to that is yes, but I think it really just, a better answer, a more interesting answer for me is it inhibits us from doing the right thing and what our constituents expect of us, whether we have a consent decree or not. Even if we didn't have a consent decree, there are things we want to do to make sure we're holding people accountable. And yes, there are recommendations coming from me and others about changes to the LEOVR that gives both the autonomy and the authority to do what constituents would expect me to do as the leader of this police department. And to me.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And to make the mandates of that consent decree. But when you hear me talk, it'll always be about really what's the right thing, although the consent decree may mandate it. Sometimes it's just the right thing to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. I think my follow-up panel is number two, but I'll circle back around. Thank you.
We'll have another chance. Councilwoman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank all of you guys for being here this afternoon. My question is, has there been a portion of the training where all the officers had a chance to know how to handle the mental health issues that we have in the city? That's number one. Number two is, are there any, like, statistics on any use of force related to mental health issues? And number three is, have you guys ever thought about, or I don't know if it was in the packet, I haven't gone through the entire packet, but creating, like, mental health service officers where some of those service officers actually go out with police officers to assess the situation? I mean, these are professional social workers that know more than majority of any of us here, but I think that it would be great that we had individuals such as, because officers are doing that job. But I think if we could have that extra component of a mental health specialist to be there to help them at their aid, it'd be greatly helpful to the Baltimore City Police Department.
Thank you for those questions, Councilmen. All excellent questions. And so let me hit them one by one on behavioral health training and crisis intervention. We are in the process of completing, retraining all of our department, all of our officers on foundational behavioral health response. So we're providing two days of remote learning over Zoom, and it's going very well right now. The feedback is very positive on it, where it's a joint training on, one day is primarily behavioral health, and one day is primarily trauma-informed victim-centered response to sexual assault. And we will continue to provide training on behavioral health moving forward, including as part of use of force and other training. We're required to provide at least 16 hours of training to all recruits on responding to behavioral health. I believe the current figure is at 24 hours. And then in terms of specialization, right now, up for public comment is our 40-hour crisis intervention team training. It's, that is where we're going to specialize and certify officers throughout the department so that on, the goal is that on every shift in every district, we have officers who perceive this 40-hour specialized training who are kind of our go-to people on responding to these calls because they're of tremendous importance. Obviously, there are big issues that we've got to deal with here. And also, those interactions can, if you look at national statistics, lead to worse outcomes a lot of the time in terms of lethal force. So this training is very focused on recognizing potential issues and de-escalating and calming those situations down. So to recap that, retraining all officers right now, all recruits are getting training, and 40-hour training for specialized officers will begin later this year after we conclude this public comment period we're going on right now. I'll pause there in case you had any follow-up on those pieces.
I wanted to jump in just to, just to be really clear for the members of the council. The 40-hour training for crisis intervention is, it's not likely that all the members of the department will get that. The goal is to train everybody in the two-day training. When it comes to the 40-hour training, the goal, because it's almost impossible to get there in a timeframe, but the goal is to make sure enough are trained so that on any given time, on any given day, regardless of who's off and who's working, there are people who have that 40-hour training working at any given time with the guarantee. So if there are 20 officers working on any shift, you know, two, three, four, or five of them should have that training, even though there may be officers who are off that are trained. officers who are off that are trained. So I think in any given department, some, I think the goal is to get somewhere between 25 and 30% of your field officers trained with that. That would give you at least 10% working at any given time.
Sounds great. But that's the last question was to have that mental health service, like officer, an individual that, and I know we're training our officers to to go out and handle these situations, but to actually have that 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 social worker with that degree that understands and that could meet that family, like meet them at their needs, like right where they're located.
Good. Great question.
We absolutely welcome it. Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah. So right now, we have a small grant-funded unit that does embed a social worker like that. Of course, we would love to expand that kind of thing if possible. And so they prioritize some of our response. There are priority response to these issues, and can also do some follow-ups with individuals. And that's something that there's a natural coordination between potentially the police department and the health department and other city agencies. So we welcome any recommendations or feedback on that. And two other points to hit there, as part of the consent decree, we're also providing training to our call takers and dispatchers. And we're working on a pilot to connect the lowest level risk calls to a hotline, get them the appropriate level services rather than sending an officer to all of these calls. So to your point, Councilman, is get them kind of that that trained clinician help over the phone to see if that can help in these very, very, very like no risk situations essentially is how they would classify it. So we're working on that right now, retraining dispatchers. And then to your question about connecting use of force with mental, use of force stats with what's there a potentially behavioral health element of that? We just had some emails on that this week. That's something that's of interest to that this collaborative planning and implementation committee that with the city BPD and behavioral health services community, they are interested in that question as well. And as we improve our data systems, we want to be able to connect those, like the stop, whatever the encounter was with the force, with the outcome of it, and any behavioral health data in a better way than we can now. I think there is there is some capability there, but it's not at the level that we wanted to be at at the end of the day, in terms of data fidelity and like the the full picture of it. But we'd be happy to try to produce some information on that if that would be helpful.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Great questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks on the committee?
Um, Chairman, I have one. This is our Councilwoman, Police Porter.
Councilman Cohen, raise his hand.
Oh.
Councilman Cohen. So I've got Councilman Cohen, I've got Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Burnett, and then Councilman Costello. Thank you. We can't hear you.
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to your team for the thorough presentation. One of the things that still leaves a lot of frustration is when I hear officers, and too often I hear officers say some variation of what you said a little earlier, deputy, which is the consent decree handcuffs me and means I can't do my job as a police officer. The message that that sends to our community is unless they are being unconstitutional in their practice, then they can't do police work. Folks in community often pick that up. There is an ongoing backlash against the consent decree. And so I think since the start, we've had a challenging time with messaging around the consent decree and just how it gets communicated. And I'm wondering how the department is thinking about improving internal and external communication. Because again, nothing drives me more crazy than hearing officers put out information to community, which is then interpreted as this consent decree is actually increasing violence, increasing crime, because it's not allowing us to do our jobs.
Well, you bring up a good point. First of all, thank you for that. It drives me crazy. There's some other words I want to use, but I don't want to offend anybody. It drives me absolutely crazy to hear that. That's but that's connected to my answer to Councilman Laramos, when I said, whether we have a consent decree or not, it's the right thing to do. And so I we are trying to create the communication strategy in our department that these are best practices, tested and tried, whether here in Baltimore, whether somewhere else, these are the national best practice that are proven. The academics and practitioners alike have demonstrated that that this is the best best crime fighting model, the community policing model. And yes, the consent decree handcuffs me and I can't do my job is code for I can't be heavy-handed, and I can't be abusive and overly aggressive. That's code for that. And so, yes, we're working to change the communication strategy. So our officers are not saying that. But what we really, the focal point of the communication strategy is, we want to do the right thing because it's the right thing to do. We want to be a better department because the citizens deserve a better department. We want to, you know, implement a best practice because what we've done was a unconstitutional practice. But we have to teach the officers the correct way. What we have done in the past, Councilmember, is we've told officers, whether it was before I got here or right when I got here, we were telling officers, here's the consent decree, here's what you're not allowed to do anymore, without telling them what they could do and demonstrating to them, oh, that's what stop searchers and arrest training and the use of force training did for us. To talk about not just what you can cannot do, but what you can do and why. And here's the correct way to do it, along with all the other things in the consent decree. So yes, communications has been a struggle for us. We continue to struggle with it, but we continue to work on it internally and externally. And to wrap the answer up, that's why, one of the reasons why, rather, I wanted our commanders to lead their own meeting in the district every single month. Because while we need the CRC presidents, and they're extremely valuable, they always will be. We have to be proactive in being the leaders of disseminating information and receiving it, and not always having to rely on others to do it for us, and putting out our our message and telling our story the right way. You've heard me say this in almost every council council meeting. It's not how well you do a thing, but rather how many people know you do it. And we've not always been able to tell the story correctly. So we we have that challenge. Thank you for recognizing that. I recognize that. It drives me crazy. And but it it's now incumbent upon the leadership and the people we're promoting to the command, command level ranks to really guide that conversation all the way down to the newest recruit in the field, and guide that information and that dialogue in the community. And that's what we work on with promoting people to command positions, making sure they understand the heart and the spirit of the consent decree, and not just the the physical words on the paper, but what's the spirit behind it. It's a tough challenge, but we're up to it.
Appreciate that, Commissioner. I say this to you privately. I say it publicly. I'm glad you're here in Baltimore. Appreciate the work that you and your team are doing, and hope and know that you will continue to push back on those who are seeking to undermine reform, both from within and without the department, because there is still that element, and it needs to be rooted out. And we need to be extremely clear that the consent decree and reforming the department does not come at the cost of all been crime.
Thank you for that. Absolutely.
We have Councilwoman Porter with her question next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question following up with Councilman Glover's question related to the mental health counselors. I was wondering, is this person going to, is this person going to be a police officer with a social worker background? Or is this going to like, are you planning to bring on actual social workers? Because the the foundation technical expertise for both of them are very different. And I want to make sure that if we are properly, properly addressing mental health, mental health, you know, within the police department, we want to make sure that we're adequately, we adequately have people on staff that are trained to do that.
So the answer is both. The answer is both. Nationally, crisis intervention training is a national best practice. It's a 4-hour course, where departments who embark upon it do do much better than departments that don't. We believe we actually need both. We actually have to have the officers trained, not with the two-day course, not just with the two-day course, rather, but with the 40-hour course that gives them the fundamental understanding of how to de-escalate and deal with it, at least from a police officer's perspective and training. Now, coupled with that going forward, we absolutely believe it's imperative that we have licensed practitioners who are actual social workers, not cops, to actually be in the field, in floor, in park, in some kind of collaborative collaborative effort with our officers, so we can have their sole response or a joint response. We absolutely need that and welcome that. So the answer is is both. We cannot do the crisis intervention training, but we can enhance it by adding social workers to actually be the first responders or a joint responder to the to the issue.
Okay. And then my my second question has to do with the grant funding related to the program. When does the grant funding end for the the program that you all mentioned? I believe it was the BCI. I can't remember. But it was the mental health, mental health program that you all were talking about in conjunction with the city health department.
Yeah, I can get to the full details on that. I don't have that immediately available to me. But we'll get that to you urgently after this.
Okay, thank you. I'll save my other questions for the next round.
Thank you. We've got Councilman Burnett. Looks like Councilman Burnett is having some technical issues. Councilman Stokes, I see your your hand up. I'm going to take after. Councilman Costello, we'll come back, Councilman, that once he gets back on. But Councilman Costello, do you have a question? I can't hear. Councilman Costello? Can't hear you. Councilman Burnett, did you have a question? Looks like he's having some technical difficulty still. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on the questions from Councilman Burnett and Councilman Costello. And I'll take a question from Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'm a, this is for the commissioner that when we brought him to Baltimore, his hair was actually black. So, you know, he's My question is, he, what'd you say?
I didn't say anything. I'm listening to you.
It was, your hair was black. That's all I noticed that, you know. So but I you did mention about the officers coming out the community doing the lineup. I want to kind of share that with you, because I have created four conference spaces in in the district. We have a conference space at the old City Yard at Wall Street, where the police come and go seven days a week. They do their paperwork, they use the bathroom, they take their lunch break. We just opened one at the Oliver Multipurpose Center on February the first. We have one on Greenmount and 21st Street. And I talked to Major Porter and Major Swinton, the Brentwood House on 25th and right off of Greenmount. That kind of overlaps northern and eastern district. That's another conference spot to do the same thing. And I've I've noticed that when the police come and go, they don't know when they're coming and going seven days a week. It has probably deterred a lot of crime and reduced a lot of crimes. So you said about that lineup being outside of the police station. When you use those conference spots, I find them very, very encouraging in terms of people seeing the police in the community. But if there's some crime in that area, those bad people notice that the police coming and going, and they don't know when they're coming and going. So I think that's something you might want to put into your, I guess, your consent decree or talk to your CRC about creating conference zones in their districts. Thank you.
So that's a, that's a, that's an interesting point. I am, you know, I think what you're talking about is perhaps substations, where we can have substations at different parts of a district or across the city. That that used to be a good model. But when technology advanced and the technology moved to the police vehicle, the officer no longer had to go into another place to write a report and to do all those other things. The I agree that there are places within a district where we can, we can have and go to use the restroom, to eat a lunch break, and all those things. The only thing I'm cautious of is then making the officers stay inside of it so long that they're still not outside doing what we want and need them to do. As long as officers are following the community policing model and are engaging, I welcome communities who have space, you know, there, there's one church in particular, I don't have to call the name, but they built an office, a meeting space in the church for the officers in that district to go to, to use the bathroom, to write their reports, and to do all those things. Now, once this records management system is up and running, they'll be doing the reports from the car. However, it's still a space where we can go. It's still a space that builds relationships where we can meet with community members. We welcome all of those. The only thing we caution is making sure our officers don't get so comfortable that that becomes such a spot where we don't see them outside.
Well, they have a sign, they have a sign-in book. So when they sign in, you can tell what time they signed in. And they have a sign-out book. So that was the idea. So what you just said, at least you can check the record to see exactly when they came to the building and how long they stayed.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. I'm going to open up for the Councilman Burnett, if your audio is working now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't get unmuted for some reason. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, and Baltimore Police Staff. I think this has been a very productive hearing so far. So I do want to thank you for always being very forthcoming with the progress on this issue, providing as much information as possible. So I just have one statement, because I didn't want to belabor the point, Mr. Chair. One statement, one question around the crisis response. I would just hope that one of the things being considered is a full-on alternate dispatch altogether. I know that that's something that, you know, a number of cities have been looking at to just fully remove the police from the equation when the opportunity presents itself. But again, you've responded in a number of ways to that. So I just wanted that on the record. The question I had, and you you made reference to it earlier, was the ACLU report, which had some very troubling findings around disparate policing and interactions and use of force along racial lines, showing that there were very deep disparities by the police officers and when they use a use of force. And overwhelmingly, their report showed that there were very disparate impacts around or disparate uses for black people in particular. So you offered an opportunity to respond to the report, wanted to give you that opportunity to do so. And just to make sure my connection is good, I'm going to turn my video off, Mr. Chair.
Well, we agree. I don't think we disagree. We absolutely agree that there's so much more work that needs to be done. The only, I think the only response I had was, when you look at their methodology, even the writer and author of it, all probabilistic. And and so it's not, it's not, there's some issues with that. And but we don't disagree that we need, there's more work that has to be done. That's what the consent decree is all about. That's why all of us are here, to make sure we can create the kind of police practices that provides public safety, holds people accountable when they commit crime, but tries to have the type of environment that prevents as much as possible in addition to apprehending people. And you've seen us, you've seen us in a short time, change a number of arrest policies, stop policies, things that we used to do that we don't do anymore, long before this report ever came. So, you know, some of the the way they are right at some of the numbers require some explanation that can be a little misleading. You know, we're not, we're not trying to punch them in the mouth on anything. We're just trying to say that we agree that there's more work that needs to be done. We agree to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison, and thank you, Councilman Burnett.
And to your, to your first point, we absolutely are, you know, welcome a totally separate response for for those type of calls that don't require a police officer. According to the consent decree, we can't not train Uh, you know, according to the consent decree, we can't not train in crisis intervention and have officers ready for for those calls that absolutely do need one. And when there's such a such a crisis that the response has to be right there when the police are right there.
Uh, thank you. I I wanted to, just for the record, get the name of the grant program. Uh, Deputy Commissioner Murphy, if you can remind us what the name of that grant program is.
I'm sorry, I don't have it immediately available to me, but the person with all the knowledge on this, if I've been texting with, and we're gonna present an email right after this. It's in coordination with like Behavioral Health Services Baltimore, there's a lot to it, but, uh, we'll get that information to you in the very near future. And, uh, to Councilman Burnett's question about that and just emphasize what, uh, the commissioner was talking about. Um, yeah, we're we're very interested in looking into alternative dispatch practices. That's why we're retraining dispatchers. Um, and and piloting, uh, some alternative dispatches in the very near future, and we'd be happy to provide an update on that, um, wh- whenever helpful.
Uh, great. Uh, Councilman Costello, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thankfully, I've been tinkering around with this thing for an hour and a half. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's very timely hearing. Uh, Commissioner Harrison, uh, one is a comment and one is a question. Number one, I want to thank you and the consent decree team, uh, for the incredible work, uh, that you all are doing. Uh, I I'm seeing the difference every single day and hearing that from the community. So a special thank you to Danny and his team, uh, and Shannon Sullivan, and all the good folks you have working on this. Uh, this is my question. Um, as we start to approach, uh, the budget season for the city, um, we know how critical staffing is in this entire model when you talk about consent decree compliance, right? We actually have to have officers that are out doing the work. Uh, you can't just have technology in place and have policies and procedures in place. None of that works without the officers and without the those officers being trained. Uh, and I know there has been, uh, temptation in the past, uh, to make wholesale budget cuts, uh, to the police department, uh, which would be absolutely catastrophic, uh, in my opinion, with respect to your ability to implement the consent decree specifically. I'd like for you to speak a little bit to that, uh, and any concerns that you have, and specifically your conversations that you've had with Judge Burdah as to the importance of ensuring that B P D, uh, is wholly staffed in order to carry out this consent decree.
Oh, uh, first of all, thank you, uh, for the acknowledgement in the beginning. Thank you for that, you know. I have an incredible team and every member of that team is especially contributes to this. So it's, it really is a team effort. So thank you for that. Um, and I share that with the entire team. Um, when it comes to the concentric, let me just give you one example, training, how we train all the officers. The 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 problem we ran into in New Orleans that we learned a valuable lesson from, and that's one of the lessons learned that I bring to Baltimore, is there were times we actually had more officers in training than we actually had on the street because the requirement was so strict and the timeline was so short to get the training done. We would have more officers in the classroom by day than we actually had on the street by day. Um, and so we learned a valuable lesson. So the the timeframe to train twenty five hundred officers and to the extent we have to train off five hundred civilians is designed so that we have minimal impact to the number of officers we actually put on the street. But it does require us to backfill many of those positions so that we don't have officers in classroom when they should be in the street. That would, that that does require funding, that does require overtime, and that affects the consent decree because that is precisely, um, what was agreed to in the very beginning on how we would deliver the training, how many people would get the training, what the timeline established uh, by the court for us to do it and the the accountability we had to meet that timeline and and be complying to the court. So it going forward, it's the very same, it's the very same methodology of how we train twenty five hundred officers in a short time, taking them off the street. If you notice, eight hours for epic training, sixteen hours for mental crisis, forty hours for crisis intervention, forty hours for inserts. Then you have detective training and P I B training and homicide training, all of the things we're doing. So it requires making sure we do it in a way that we can do it fast enough so that we can create core competencies, but also do it in a way that doesn't, uh, doesn't create a staffing deficit or shortage on the street. We backfill those positions with overtime to make sure public safety is still paramount and we can do that while while training the department. While we grow and while we retain, you know, all those things are all important as well. Um, but that's how you actually train a department while the department is performing at the same time.
Mr. Chair, if I can just ask the commissioner to expand on that, if I may, or is my second question? So Commissioner, again, I'm, and I appreciate all that, and I know we've talked about this a lot. Um, but I was hoping you could, uh, I guess, focus the response a bit more on, and I apologize, maybe I asked the question the wrong way, focus a bit more on the importance of staffing and, you know, the the cost burden associated with that and why it's critically important uh, that there are not wholesale cuts to the police department because those wholesale cuts, uh, would lead to, uh, putting us in a position where we cannot carry out the consent decree.
Well, you're so so that's a another another good point. So when it comes to staffing, staffing actually allows us to comply with all the mandates of the consent decree. But even things that are not covered in the consent decree, the day to day operations require staffing. For example, when we started, the department did not have a comprehensive crime plan. It did not have goals, certain goals set, like what is the response time, unacceptable response time to an emergency call? How much occupied time versus how much free time do we want officers have? How much time do we want officers spending on community policing? So we've established those goals and put those goals into the crime plan, which was approved by the consent decree, and then we hired a consultant to do the staffing plan. To accomplish the goal of having a great community policing plan, we had established the goal of how much time we want our officers spending on community policing, which is, um, forty percent of their workday or twenty minutes out of every hour um, or forty percent of the workday, which means we have to add more people, but we had to reduce the workload and the burdens of the officers that exists right now. We're doing both of those. Uh, but to accomplish that goal, we have to have the appropriate staffing. We have to have the technology to offset some of the work that's manually done and paper based. But we have to reduce the burden of how many calls officers are going to that we should not be going to that can create more free time while we add more people to get to that sixty percent of the day is occupied with answering citizens' citizens' calls and forty percent is available for that community engagement that makes up this community policing plan that we have. Uh, and the staffing plan brings us to that, but, uh, it's almost it's impossible without, it's impossible to achieve the community policing goals without achieving the staffing plan goals.
Yeah, and and if I could, Commissioner, just to expand on that, part of the the directives we've heard from Judge Burdah have been, we need more staffing and things like our Public Integrity Bureau, as we mentioned previously. Those officers don't come from anywhere. They come from eventually patrol. And so everything kind of ties back to ensuring we have the budgetary resources available to be compliant with the kind of expectations. The consent decree, for instance, asks us, mandates us to turn around cases within a prescribed amount of time. Not the one year that we're legally allowed to, but a shorter period of time. For us to meet those goals, we have to be able to staff to our workload needs. And for the first time, we have a consent decree approved staffing plan that is built on workload. Now, if we can find ways to economize workload and we can find ways to, you know, alternative means by which the department can handle certain types of work, we welcome those because it will free up our resources for the things that we know we need to have be achieved by sworn law enforcement. So in my role, you know, I'm the chief of staff and and part of my job is to help develop and update that staffing plan on an annual basis along through this process. And so, you know, we welcome those ideas on how we can build alternative structures to having reliance on police, but it's very important that we build those structures first before we pull the police support back. And so we want to welcome that partnership, but for us, until those things are built and until those resources are available to do those alternative means, we we need to continue to rely on the department. And when the department is set forth on a training schedule that is court mandated, cannot deviate, it requires overtime to backfill those positions that are left vacant because of folks in training. And when we divert more resources to things like public integrity, it means it comes from other detective units that have to be backfilled, which ultimately comes from patrol. We don't want to see that, you know, go back to a place where we were at critical numbers. All of this is tied to our budgetary resources to be able to succeed going forward, and the judge is keeping a very, very watchful eye on all. Yes.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make sure we're uh, that we on the council are keeping our eye on the larger picture here, that budgetary resources are directly tied to our ability to successfully implement the consent decree. Mayor Scott has made very clear that his top two priorities, and I think rightfully so in our city right now, are public safety and dealing with COVID nineteen. Uh, and if we're gonna really deal with COVID or with, uh, public safety, we need to deal with the consent decree, and in order to do that, we need to deal with staffing, and that requires the appropriate level of budgetary resources to make the trains run on time at B P D. Uh, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, thank you, Councilman Costello, and thanks for responding to those questions. We're gonna circle back around for the next round of questions, and for this one, we're gonna keep it to a single question. Seventy, uh, excuse me, sixty five positions that, uh, B P D has recently civilianized. Um, given this conversation about, uh, making sure we have officers on the street, how does how does that part of the plan and how is how's that process help with the culture shift and the ability to meet the need, uh, both on the streets and with, uh, training?
So so great question. Civilian is a, it's actually civilianization and professionalization. So it's not just a single concept of civilianization, but it professionalizes department to put people, uh, who actually should be doing those, uh, clerical and administrative non-enforcement duties into the hands of 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 professional staff, thereby relieving sworn personnel who are trained in the police academy to go out and be police officers to do just that. And coupled with people who actually have the skill set to perform those professional staff duties, it's much less expensive to hire, uh, professional staff to do some of those duties as than it is to hire actual police officers. And the time it, the time it takes to actually hire a civilian to perform that versus putting a police officer in that position who went to a probably thirty six week police academy, who could be relieving some of the burden of the manpower shortage by actually being in the field. And so two things have to happen. We have to hire more police officers, but we have to offset some of that work by making sure that we hire the the right professional staff who have the skill set to do that work, um, in the absence of police officers, but also in the place where police officers weren't working but still had a shortage and a desperate need for that professional staff to be, because it professionalizes the police department. And usually what happens, it happens in every city. In economic downturns, professional staff are let go and the police have to fill that gap because the work has to be done. And so we've seen where police officers were the mechanics, they were the bathroom attendants, they were the, you know, bringing, you know, carrying documents and chauffeurs and they were doing all the administrative functions. Uh, but but now there's an opportunity to professionalize the department and civilianize it to always make sure officers can be doing police officer work to the extent that it becomes managerial and leadership positions where officers move into those roles, sworn professional staff is more important.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Council, uh, Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Team and and to my colleagues for answering, asking a bunch of my questions already, which is great. Um, I, uh, wanted to follow up on the Councilman Costello's, um, uh, question around the budget. Uh, do you anticipate being able to draw down any other federal funding for implementation and and this work? Uh, because what's gonna happen in the next couple of years, uh, is two things. One is, you know, if Kerwin is overturned, then we have to actually come up with resources to, uh, pay for, you know, the city schools match that we're gonna have to come up with, which, by the way, if we, you know, invest in our kids and invest in our schools, then, you know, we're hoping that that will have an impact, um, on, um, on crime, but also, uh, but then obviously we have all of these other things that we need to have, you know, expenses. So how do you see sort of federal funding, uh, playing into it and also how you're seeing how we need to manage resources a little bit better, not just with overtime, but are there other investments that we could be making and other strategies that would then, you know, allow, uh, not not to have so much of our budget as, um, as, uh, whose budget? You're on mute, sir. You're on mute, sir.
All right. Can you hear me? I think there are opportunities for federal support, especially when it comes to the consent decree. One of our Congress, one of our congressmen was pushing to get funding for consent decree, not just for us but for other cities, because really that's an unfunded mandate. And we're doing a lot with the consent decree, but it's an unfunded mandate. It is a mandate, and let's put it as unfunded. That's one area where I believe we could probably use the most help. Normally, the federal government, uh, provides technical assistance, and the federal government provides funding for things in partnership with the police department, but doesn't offset salaries. And they don't provide money for salaries and for and for benefits for for members of a police department. Where they can come in and help and supplement, they they will. Um, you know, we made cuts early on in the Kerwin conversation to our budget on our own. Um, and provided that to the mayor and city council at that time. And there are more ways for us to be more efficient and have better management in how we utilize our resources. I don't know that there is, other than grant funding for salaries, I don't know that that really exists like we'd like it to. But they offer technical support. They don't normally offer, um, money to pay police officer salaries to offset budgets.
And and Councilmember, one of the things we have been successful with in, um, our records management system is obtaining a four million dollar, uh, federal grant for that. Um, so there are these opportunities for technology investments that we have been successful in obtaining federal, uh, resources to help us get through to a consent decree mandate. So there are some opportunities down the road that we continue to explore those opportunities. Our our grant staff is small but dedicated, uh, you know, very, uh, very professional, but uh, it's a lot of resources out there that we've continued to pursue and we will continue to do so. Um, and, you know, we've done, we've done a lot with the CARES Act, of course, in the previous year, um, to provide to the city all of the resources that we think are reimbursable to the city through the CARES Act. Um, and we'll continue to make those partnerships happen with the Department of Finance and with the Budget Office going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I'm I'm sure we'll have more discussions around this during budget time, um, but thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Any other questions from any other, uh, council members in attendance? Seeing none, we'll move on to public testimony. Um, we ask, we're gonna, we're gonna open up the floor. We ask that folks state their name and, uh, speak clearly for the record. If you could raise your hand in the chat, we can acknowledge you and, um, open up the floor. Okay, I'm gonna put out one more call. We don't see any hands up right now. If anyone has questions, uh, please raise your hand and and we'll acknowledge you in the chat. Um, this is an opportunity for for public testimony of your questions. Seeing no question, testimony, um, this, uh, this will. Oh, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, again, technical difficulties. I just wanted to specifically thank you for your leadership. I just wanted to specifically thank you for your leadership on this. This was very good to get this this update. Appreciate the detailed presentation from from B P D, and I look forward to more of these hearings under your leadership in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. To that end, this legislative hearing is in recess. We will reconvene on this topic at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much.